I've got my little hammer, guys. It's very small. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. It's February 11th at 5:00 PM. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
Some.
Some?
Yeah.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous? If you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We've got a action-packed agenda here, so we will get right into it. First up is a review of two of our policies, as you guys may know, and for the benefit of the public. Over the last year, we've taken it upon ourselves to review every single board policy. So we review several a month. There's been a few changes, not too many. So we've got two more back on the agenda tonight with Mr. Mitch Young, our superintendent. The first policy is, wow, what a horrible acronym, DIE, fraud prevention.
Yes, and we have no proposed changes to this policy.
We might want to change the acronym. No proposed changes?
No proposed changes.
From the members? All right.
No.
The next policy up is policy DJE, purchasing.
And there is no proposed changes to this policy.
All right. Any discussion from the members on these policies?
I have a question on the purchasing policy.
It, Suzie, if you don't mind, and this is really more for just information, the, I saw the line here, superintendent is, or his designee is authorized to approve any and all purchases from budgeted funds less than $100,000. Is that consistent with across the state, like, normal school system amounts? Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We will move on to item 4C, which is teaching and learning update of our CCRPI results with Dr. Amy Bartlett. Thank you, Dr. Bartlett.
Evening, everybody. We are our coordinator of accountability, and the last time, I think, we had an extensive presentation with you was back before the holidays as we presented the Georgia Milestones results. And so those lead into what we are about to share tonight, which is an overview of the CCRPI results for the state of Georgia for 2024. So with that said, just a reminder that CCRPI stands for the College and Career Ready Performance Index, and this is an indicator of educating our whole child. So you'll see from the indicators today, it really does represent a well-rounded view of how we're doing with educating the whole child. It used to generate a single score in CCRPI for the state of Georgia. That no longer happens. However, we do want to note that GOSA, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, does still calculate a single score because we do have requirements by state law that a single score is used to inform the school grades reports website. So if you do happen to see on GOSA's site, there will be a single score, but not on the official CCRPI site. We just wanted to clarify that for everybody. So as we delve into the CCRPI, it does measure both school, well, three, school, district, and state performance in terms of five components, and those components are listed on your screen, the first being content mastery, or what we refer to as achievement, and that is based on statewide assessments in four content areas, English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. The second indicator is progress, which measures how much growth students demonstrate, and that is in two specific content areas, both English Language Arts and Mathematics. They constitute 45% each of this indicator of progress, which is 90%, and 10% is given toward progress of English language proficiency. The third indicator is closing gaps, which measures how well our schools are meeting annual improvement targets for our subgroups. And the fourth indicator is readiness, and this indicator includes literacy scores, student attendance, the percentage of students succeeding beyond the core of instruction, as well as accelerated enrollment, pathway completion, and other college career readiness measures, which we'll delve into deeper as we go through our presentation this evening. And the final indicator is graduation rate. In terms of CCRPI, this graduation rate is calculated by averaging both the four-year and five-year graduation rates, which is only at the high school level. So to walk you through all of the details of each of these indicators, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Kizer as he'll give a in-depth look at each of the indicators.
Good evening. So content mastery, this is looking at our milestone subject areas, right? So we're looking at grades three through eight with our EOGs, and then our high school specific, those are the subject area tests. And so what happens is we have four achievement levels with the Georgia Milestones, and so the content mastery score is calculated by multiplying the percentage of students scoring at each of those four achievement levels. These are the points that are awarded. So if we have a beginning-level learner, the lowest level, we only receive zero points for those students developing, a half point proficient students, one full point, and distinguished, 1.5. And because of that, with that 1.5, the state made some changes over the last few years to CCRPI. You used to, in the indicators, so Amy talked about the components. When we talk about the indicators, those are within the components. Those used to be able to exceed 100, and the problem, what was happening throughout the state was when you had a high achieving population receiving 1.5, it would often push that indicator past 100, and it would mask the lower achievement in the overall score. So sometimes you'll see an indicator score of 100-plus, and what that's saying is that we had a large number of students receiving those 1.5s. So here are our scores for each level. So we've got the elementary level, middle level, and high school level, which are the subject-specific tests. And so you can see the scores for each content area, and then the last column is the overall score at each level. So the next component is progress, and progress is growth. So content mastery, achievement, progress is growth. As Dr. Bartlett said, this is divided up, 45% mathematics, 45% ELA, or English Language Arts, and then 10% comes from our access test, that's our English Language Proficiency testing. Math and ELA are the only two subject areas that are tested each year, and that's why a growth percentile can be calculated. So it's a similar situation, there are four levels of growth, and so it's calculated by multiplying the percentage of students demonstrating growth at each of those four levels. Each individual student is assigned a growth percentile. That begins in the second year of testing, and that is their score compared to similar students with the same score in the prior year. So here's an example of how that works. So in this example, we have an individual student here, and if we say the student is a third grader, so that 537, score of 537 was earned in third grade. In fourth grade, that student earned a 512. So all of the other students who earned a 537 in third grade were put in a bucket with this student, and based on that score of a 512 in fourth grade, our student here scored higher than 34% of those students and received a growth percentile of 34. Moving to the next grade level, the student scored a 523. That process continues up through each grade level, where the student is in a bucket with students throughout the state with the same score in the prior year, and that growth percentile is awarded based on how that student performed compared to similar academic students. So really, what's happening in growth, the difference, one of the differences between achievement and growth, in achievement, we're looking at moving those students to the next achievement level. In growth, we're wanting to move these students as far as we can regardless of the achievement level, because a student might already be a distinguished-level student, but we want to move that student as far as we can in terms of growth. These are the ranges. So on the left, we have the growth percentile ranges. So our student in the previous slide, if that student had a growth percentile of 52, that student would be in that third range, and we would earn one full point for that These are progress scores for each of the levels. So we have elementary. You'll notice that when you get down to, so elementary, middle, high, when we get down to high school, you'll notice it says NA for ELA, and that's because the high school test for the last several years has been at the 11th grade level. If you trace backward with those students to their prior-year ELA score, it would have been when they were in eighth grade. And in that year, we had limited testing throughout the state because we still had large virtual population, and those students didn't always come into the schools to test. So there's not a valid and reliable prior-year score, and that's why we don't have ELA at the high school level. Closing gaps. This component, it's driven from the data in content mastery, and what it's doing is it's taking that data that we saw in the first component and it's applying it to these 10 groups of students. So our student groups are subgroups, those terms are used interchangeably. These are all the federally mandated groups that are reported, and you can see that the all-students group is one of those at the top. And then we have our economically disadvantaged, our English learners and students with disabilities, which historically, being the lowest performing of the subgroups over time, and so you'll see in closing gaps, there are some differences for those students. These flags are used to indicate whether or not the students, the student groups meet their targets. And so you're awarded points for positive movement and for reaching the target. So that first flag is the green flag with a gold star. That is only available for those economically disadvantaged English learners and students with disabilities groups if they meet their target. Then we have the green flag for all other subgroups if they meet their achievement target, and then we have the yellow flag. So if any group makes progress, like, forward progress but doesn't meet the target, they're going to earn a yellow flag. And then any group that does not move forward, right, any backward movement, is going to be a red flag anytime that group is outside of the maintenance level. I'll explain here what that maintenance level is. That'll come up on the next slide. This slide is showing us the points that are awarded for each flag. So if we, if those three subgroups meet their target and they receive the green flag with the gold star, they're going to earn 1.5 points. All other subgroups, if they meet their target, they earn one point. A yellow flag, so we are awarded for forward movement and not meeting the target, that's going to be a half point, and then a red flag equals zero points. So this slide demonstrates how the targets are generated. So the baseline score was created in 2022, and that set the baseline for five years, or that set the improvement target for five years. So I've got two examples here. The example on the, and I've got one that's a 50, one that's an 87, because one of these is a relatively high score and one of these is a relatively low score, and I want to do that to show the difference in the improvement target amount. So we subtract from 90, and the reason we subtract from 90 is because groups scoring 90 and above are in maintenance level. So you're considered to be in maintenance level because of that high achievement, and you can float up and down within that, as long as you don't drop below 90, you still get your red flag, I'm sorry, your green flag. But if you drop anything below a 90, 89.99 would be a red flag. So we subtract from 90, whatever the baseline year score was, we multiply that difference by 3%, and that gives us our improvement target amount. So we can see that on the example on the left, the improvement target amount, the 3% of the difference is 1.2. In the example on the right, the target improvement is .09. So a higher score in the baseline year means that you have a lower improvement amount for the next five years. A lower score, you're expected to make a larger gain, four or five years. Wherever the group scores over those five years, that same 3% of the gap target increase is applied to that score. This is just a summary slide saying that 2022 was the baseline year for setting those targets. The subsequent-year targets, that are, that 3% amount is added to wherever the group scores, and the 90 and higher represents the maintenance level. This is an example of our elementary school science score from 2024, and the reason we have this slide in here is because it's going to help to understand how we approach the next three slides. So the very top line, our all-students group, when we look at science, these would be fifth grade students, their target amount, their target score was an 84.99. They scored an 84.08. So an 84.99 for all students could be considered a very good score. An 84.08 is just below that target, but since they had backward movement from their initial score of the prior year, that's a red flag. So a red flag, in this case, doesn't indicate a large drop, but it does indicate that they moved backward rather than forward. The next two groups are in maintenance level, so you can see that the target is a 90. So the American Indian, Alaska Native group, target was a 90. So it's always going to be listed as a 90 when you're in a maintenance level, even if your prior-year score was a 98. They scored a 90.92. So they were within one point of that turning into a red flag, but they're in maintenance level. The next group, also in maintenance level, and that's an example of the 100-plus that I mentioned earlier.
And Tim, let me ask you a question, that'll also buy you a second to take a breath.
Sure.
All right. We don't set these targets. The targets are set by the state based on student data, correct?
Correct.
I just think it's important to note that when you look at this, because you might see targets set at lower numbers for different groups on there, that's not us setting those targets, that's done mathematically by the state, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the state publishes these targets for us each January based on the prior-year score.
I have a question. Are these, are these real scores, or it says example, is it literally an example?
These are our real scores. These are our scores from 2024 for elementary school science.
Thank you.
So as we move down, so I would say that the top red flag, as I mentioned, right, that was, we almost reached that target, we were very close to that target, but that's a red flag. As we move farther down this list, there are examples that are different from that. So a large part of our work is looking at, right, the flag may draw our attention, but then looking at the numbers determines the sense of urgency and what steps are we going to put in place related to those numbers.
It also points out not to get too excited when you see a green flag or a star, because you may get excited about, oh, this is great growth, which it is, you know, however, we're not ever going to be satisfied just hitting the targets that are on there. Obviously, we want everybody as high as we can, you know, possibly get them to.
And you may have explained this, and it kind of went over my head, but how do we get to the target again?
How's the target reach?
Okay, basically back to that slide.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we take, actually, what I'll do here.
It's the improvement target.
Right, right. So you notice, like, the economically disadvantaged score here, that 51.73, that's very close to that 50 example that I had. So if the baseline score for that group were a 50, this is how the target would be calculated so that next year, they would be expected to grow to a 51.2.
The gap that we're trying to close, Tim, is the gap between where they are and a 90. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Our improvement amount is 3% of that gap between 90 and where they scored. Now, because of that, there is a certain amount of volatility in closing gaps. This is a component, if you look across the state, where if you look at individual schools and systems, it tends to move forward and backward, or upward, up and down each year, because if a group doesn't meet the target, like, in this example on the screen right now, one of these groups that was expected to hit a target, let's say the Hispanic group with the 56.94, they didn't hit it, they hit a 49.91. Well, if that, let's say this is an individual school, if that score were to replicate what they did to earn the 56.94, like, go back to that, well, we would hope that we would meet the target again. So the state has designed this so that your next year is going to be easier to achieve that target, because now you're trying to move from where you landed rather than trying to get back to where you started in the baseline year. So this is a summary of our flags. When we're looking at elementary school for closing gaps, and you'll notice there's no mathematics in closing gaps this year, and that's because we had new standards that were implemented in 2024, 23-24 school year, so you couldn't make a direct comparison within closing gaps, so we only have it for these other subject areas. It's our elementary summary. Middle school summary of flags.
To your point earlier, when you see a red flag, that's to draw your attention, but then you got to go into the numbers to see really what that flag represents, because it, it may not be as devastating as you think out of the gate, and it may not be worth celebrating as much as you think out of the gate when you see a green flag.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And that's part of the reason for having the multiple components, right? So the closing gaps holds us accountable for what we might not see in that initial view of content mastery. Here's a summary of our high school closing gaps. This is another example. So when we look at biology and we see that we have more than one red flag, then we go in there and we look at those results. We look and see what was the target, where did we score? But then this, this piece of information, by the time we receive this in CCRPI, we've already received the milestones results, and so we've done the same type of work in our milestones analysis before we see this in CCRPI. And then the readiness component. So readiness looks identical or nearly identical at the elementary and middle school level. There are some differences when you get inside of something like beyond the core and the list of courses, but essentially, these three indicators for elementary and middle school are all evenly weighted, and that's looking at the Lexile level from the milestones assessment, so students reading on grade level and above, looking at student attendance, so there we're looking for, what the state is looking for, students who are absent less than 10% of enrolled days, and beyond the core. So with beyond the core, those are those, those are those courses that are outside of those state-tested subject areas, such as fine arts and career tech. For high school, we have five evenly-weighted indicators. So we still have reading, grade level and above, student attendance, but then we also look at accelerated enrollment, right? So that's those students who are in the dual-enrollment APIB courses. Our pathway completers, so that's looking at multiple areas of pathways, our career tech, our fine arts, world languages, advanced academic. And then we have college and career readiness. College and career readiness is a lagging indicator, so the numbers for that are always one year behind the rest of the data, because we have to have the universities report back to us, students who were admitted to college without remediation, AP scores, IB scores, pieces of data that we don't have by the time CCRPI, by the time the new school year has started. Here's a summary of readiness at the elementary and middle school level. So once again, we're looking at, we look at each piece of data here, and we're making decisions based on this. In most cases, just like with the milestones assessments, we've already been looking at our, for example, our attendance data and have strategies in place related to that. Here's our high school summary of readiness. And graduation rate is the final component. So when you're looking at CCRPI graduation and you see that score, that number is slightly different from what you'd see with the published graduation rates when the Department of Ed does a public release, and that's because for CCRPI, they're looking at students who take, who graduate within four years, but also students who take that fifth year to graduate. They're taking those two rates and they're combining them to make a graduation rate score in CCRPI.
Okay, so in summary, we just wanted to provide you some context. This is the results from 2024 of Forsyth County schools in comparison with the state of Georgia, which is important for us to look at, but even more importantly, is a benchmark against ourselves in Forsyth County year to year. So you can see clearly here, we're doing great work in the area of content mastery and progress, and still some work to do, though, in certain areas with closing gaps that we need to further take a look at. We do like to look at ourselves in comparison and benchmark again to ourselves, and this is 23 to 24 results for CCRPI in our own county, and you can see there, we did have either, we stayed at the same level or increased in all areas with the exception of high school progress. So we do feel that things are moving in the same direction, but it's really important for us that deep analysis, we've just given you a surface level, and it is a lot to take in and absorb over time, but really digging into what does this all mean for us? We can look at numbers all day long, but what does this really mean for us? And that's where we put data into action. And so just to give you context, we have done deep analysis with our school-level leaders to really make sure they understand all of these components and specifically what these components look like at their individual schools. We want them to dig into school-level data. So a data point isn't just a number, but it becomes a student. They really drill down, down to the student level to begin to realize and recognize where we have interventions that are needed, action steps that are needed within certain content areas, and this is all very closely and tightly aligned to our school improvement plans. So even though we designed those in the summer, prior to the school year starting, really at the midpoint of the year, we're coming back in to take a second look at our action steps, our targeted areas, and making sure that we're putting in place action steps that specifically target those needs, those areas that need improvement. And then, of course, at the district office level, we're here to support those schools in those targeted areas of need, and reviewing with them those practices that are going to most likely impact, in some cases in our schools, just to go back for a moment to content mastery, and this is maybe a little-known fact that's buried, if you don't have 95% of your students test, you're penalized on the CCRPI. So as we did data digs with our schools last school year, we realized several of our secondary schools were under that 95% threshold, so their scores should have been much higher if they just had kids come and take the test. So that's an education piece through our LSCs and our PTOs and our parent communities to say, it really is important that your students come and take the test, because participation alone can lower those scores for us. So again, drilling into the data to say, where are those areas that we can make adjustments, and certainly within content areas, that really is affirmation of the targeted areas we have, certainly looking at literacy in the area of science and what action steps we have in place to support our schools. So with that said, we've thrown a lot of information at you, I'm sure you do have questions, and we're here to address any questions or highlight any other aspects we can with where our work is based on the CCRPI data.
Well, I'll start by saying thank you. This is very comprehensive, and obviously you guys spent a lot of time on this, so thank you.
This is very comprehensive, and obviously you guys spent a lot of time on this, so thank you very much, you and your teams. Also, thank you for taking our emails and calls and us bothering you on your nights and weekends when we're working, sorry about that. You don't ever have to answer us at those hours, that's just when we have time. But I do appreciate that even on Sundays and Saturdays, you guys are answering us and giving us really comprehensive explanations, so thank you for that. I'll open it up to the members if anybody has any questions or.
Just for the public to know, when lexiles are are mentioned for student achievement, those those lexile levels are, those come from the state, like those are not determined by us. And then we just, um, sorry, I just lost my frame of mind, oh my gosh. How do you feel like our our standards compared to the state, like they're pretty well aligned with the lexiles?
Yes, we we use that information as well as we have other measures that we use across the year because obviously these assessments are once a year. So we need to have other indicators of where our students are in terms of performing a grade level proficiency. So we do have universal screeners in in the area of both reading and math that happen three times a year in elementary. We're looking to expand that into our secondary schools next year because we don't want just a once-a-year measure of our student, uh, their their achievement and their progress. So yes, we are aligning all of those pieces together so that we have indicators and using, those are, the lexiles come in bands, so it's a stretch band of where students can fall to be considered on grade level, and we do utilize that information as we we use our other assessments.
Thank you.
So this is a lot of information.
The one, what, let me just jump in here if you, if if you don't, and I'm not asking a question, and I'm not trying to throw you a a curveball. I'm just throwing this out there, but but one of the things that we that we saw last year was lower participation at the secondary level. I, we're going to be reopening the question of the the weight on EOCs for for end-of-year testing at the secondary level. I know last year that was downed, kind of downgraded to ten, ten percent. Um, I think sometimes potentially, and that's what I'm going to ask you guys to look into. But when you lower that so much, uh, there there's sort of a a message sent that these aren't important. And it may make it easier not to not to show up and participate. So I want us to look into that a little bit. I know that may not be wildly popular when we get to our to our secondary folks, but I just want to go ahead and put that out there that we're that we're going to look more deeply at that.
So this is a lot of information for people like me that are not trained in in this world. So I'll ask you, if you can, to reduce to layman's terms. Where are we at, these scores, how do you guys feel about them? Strengths, weaknesses, kind of a synopsis summary of how do we feel about these results?
I think we feel good. We recognize we're not back to pre-pandemic levels, but at the same time, we're seeing increases and at a and at a fairly good rate. I think for us, it's affirmation. There was nothing in the data that really surprised us. When we go back to our strategic plan, which is our anchor and our guidepost, we feel that those areas of improvement we've indicated are really affirmed by our data. So I feel like we have the action steps in the right places. Do we have some fine tuning at different school levels, maybe within a subgroup or certain areas like that? Absolutely, and we're coming in to to really, again, go down to the student level at the schools so they know, are we targeting the right students with the right things? But in terms of, I'm going to go broad for a minute, those areas of literacy and science in particular, those are tremendous focus areas in our district across the board in a vertical way. And I feel like we have great action steps in place that we are putting things in place to meet those needs. So for us, we're moving in the right direction, but with affirmation of our work. And I think affirmation for our schools of their current school improvement plans and the work that they're deeply embedded in at those schools.
So obviously, this board and and prior boards have been laser-focused on the post-COVID reality where we've seen, you know, some of our results dip. How's that coming along? I know that it's progressing, but are we, what can we do as a board? What do you guys need? Are there any roadblocks? Because I think everybody wants to see this come back to and and exceed pre-COVID levels.
Well, I I I absolutely agree with that. I think honestly with Mr. Young, you know, coming in as our new superintendent as well, he's made things very clear. We are focused on strong tier-one instruction and accountability. And that is really the primary role of of all of us in all of our schools. So I I definitely think that message has been clearly stated across our schools, and it's a collective effort by our schools, by our district office to come into that. I know our board members, you've been out at breakfasts, vertical cluster breakfasts, to hear directly from our t- our leaders about what are your real needs in the building. I would imagine, I guess, coming back to you, these areas are probably some of the same things you're hearing in your in your time with our stakeholders in terms of what kind of supports, that's what you're asking us, what kind of support do you need? I definitely think that that we're all on the same page with this, and I think that they're very grateful for the resources that have been given. For example, some of the instructional coaches that have been allocated by this Board of Education to come in and support our English learner subgroup, to come in and support literacy instruction. As we continue to come back to you and say, these are the resources we feel we need to move the needle, you have been very willing to listen and to respond in ways that are are supporting us from both a fiscal place and also a human resource aspect. And I think that's what our our leaders are advocating and coming to you with, and and you've been so responsive to listen. Anything else you want to add to that, Mr. Kieser?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I I have another another question, and, you know, we're in a high-performing school district. Obviously, we're we're kind of splitting hairs here, right, because we are, scores are very good. But I want to ask you about these subgroups, you know, black, Hispanic, the the kind of the least of these that are falling behind here. What what are we doing or what can we do or what should we do specifically to zoom in to these students that are falling behind, probably because of economic, language reasons, family reasons? What could we do for those those kids?
Well, there's there's a multitude of things, and we have leveraged in, and and again, depending on what the subgroup is, and this depends on, sometimes they're clustered differently in our school demographics, and that goes into an individual school improvement plan, but also a district lens. So again, for the English learner subgroup, we have really poured in extraordinary resources in terms of there are coaches assigned to every vertical cluster to specifically, we know they have English language services and segments, but we've put those coaches in place to work with those teachers in the content area in the tier-one space. So not just how do we equip our teachers to understand what are those instructional strategies that are most beneficial for our English learners? Because their intelligence is off the charts, but it just might be a language acquisition issue. So training our teachers on ways to better meet their needs in in a multiple modality way during the instructional time is critical. We're able to do that with the resources. Again, we could go line by line by these different groups, our students with disabilities, delving into it. Is there something within the flags that we see? Uh, I think one of you requested, what's the most prominent level that we're not seeing those gains made? Those are the kind of deep levels of data analysis we need to do within each school. We can look at, you know, service models and and instructional resources we're using within those classes. So that's the kind of intricate analysis we do. This is a definitely a ten thousand, maybe thirty thousand-foot view. But just know that those much more granular conversations per student subgroup area, it's individualized to school, certainly at the district level as well of what we can do to meet those needs. If you want to add to that, Tim?
Yes, um, and another piece to that, right? So we're talking about from from our view and the work that we do here. When you're getting down to another important piece to this, right? When you're getting down to that classroom view, all of these students are in at least two subgroups. So, right, because everyone's represented in the all students, and then it might, they're in an ethnicity group. So sometimes there's there are a lot of pieces here, a student may have multiple, a student may be in one of the ethnic subgroups, but then also is economically disadvantaged, or it also is an English learner or a student with disability. So that's another important piece to the work is identifying what what does each individual student need, right? What are the what are the barriers that this student is encountering, and what can we do to remove those?
And just a kind of a closing thought for me. As our demographics change and our population changes, it's brought in a lot of high-performing students, but obviously it's also bringing in some students that need more help and have language barriers, economic situations. Um, I know you guys are doing this, but I would encourage all of us to continue to laser-focus on those subgroups. Not not only or primarily because they need the most help, but also because obviously it affects the bigger picture. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are are laser-focused on that.
And I do want to point out that that was one of the expectations set forth by Dr. Beard and our previous superintendent, now Mr. Young, is that as part of the school improvement plan at each individual school level, there should be a component where we are looking at those school-level subgroups. So that intentionality with the the laser focus on that is critically important. Every student matters, and and we need to make sure we're moving that needle with all of our subgroups.
Anything else? Thank you guys very much. Well done. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, SPOST accomplishments with Dr. Michelle Dugan and Mr. Matt Work.
Hi, good evening. Um, we are so excited for the opportunity to talk to you about SPOST and to highlight our SPOST spotlight, which is our first for twenty twenty five. As a communications department, one of our most pressing and important roles of our department is to make sure that our community is well-informed, in particular about their tax dollars and how those tax dollars are used. So we're going to highlight SPOST in particular, that special purpose local option sales tax, and talk through and highlight a recent celebration of those tax dollars that were very intentionally and responsibly used. So let's take a peek at that. I'm going to pass it over to Matt Work. Just a reminder, and and we've seen this really for the first time ever, that now our governance goals really tie into our strategic plan. So instead of having my two charts that I've shared with you in the past, they are one. Please know that all of our SPOST projects, even though they're capital-outlay focused, they touch every single area of our strategic plan, and of course, the governance goals, and even some of those legislative priorities that you all approved earlier this year. Mr. Work?
Go first?
I can.
Real quick, I'll let Michelle go ahead and play a video on Lakeside, then I'll come back in and kind of do some highlights. Thank you very much. And I promised those evening shots, we did not work past our county required hours of operations. I want to thank Mr. Young, first of all, for having me present these highlights. Um, I'm always proud to celebrate my team and what we accomplish, especially after the last four years, because we are coming to the last year of our current SPOST six. So it's great to be able to highlight these projects, look what our our penny sales tax is helping do for our community. I've also had the great honor, he's allowed me to go and speak to LSC meetings at all the schools. I was at Chesta T this morning, I was at West High last week, I think I have two more next week. I think everyone's starting to book a little bit. And they're all very thankful for having me come because I kind of talk with them about what the SPOST looks like, what is the SPOST, how it's generated. They love the line that it does not fall all on the residents, that anyone that shops, that kind of gets quite the clap, you know? So they're very thankful for that. So I greatly thank Mr. Young for allowing me to come and do this every month. He's told me every month, so that's fine. So we're excited to do that, we're taking Lakeside first, which is exciting. But before I get into a couple highlights, I won't be here more than a minute. I do want to thank my team, I won't do this every month, thank them. But this is a full effort of the facilities department. It all starts with when we start planning and doing five-year projections. Do we need this? When do we build that? I come up with crazy ideas about taking a berm out of the back of a school at Lakeside. They look at me crazy, but Greg and Jan, Greg Pruitt and Jan Sells in our planning department, they figure out how to make that work, they put it on paper. Then I turn it over to our construction department, Tom Wenning and Casey Rose, and they somehow just build it, okay? It's kind of weird when you look at it that way, but they make that happen. But then the final piece that a lot of people forget, then my maintenance team takes it over forever. They maintain it for the next twenty-five, thirty years, or if not longer. I'm very proud of our maintenance guys because they have extremely high standards. We don't just turn over a beautiful building, we take care of it, and it stays beautiful for many, many years. A lot of my guys graduated from Forsyth County schools, and they take amazing pride in that. So I thank the maintenance side as well at the end. In closing, just a few things about Lakeside that it was on the slides. But first thing is that we did this job with less than one percent change orders. Now, I know Mike kind of understands that, being in the construction world a little bit. That's unheard of, and actually, we were less than five percent, or point five percent, a half a percent. What that means is change orders means when you get into a project, things happen. And normally, they say, well, we need more money to fix this, or we need more of that, or it was a bad design. That does not happen with Forsyth County schools. Huh? Thank you.
Well, that's why there's a halo around Dr. Thompson's, you know, picture right here is because.
It's not lucky, that's good, man, that's not like we're good. That's a good.
It's an accomplishment because honestly, it goes back to the beginning. If you have a bad design, then contractors try to say, hey, it was your fault that you made these mistakes. There are no mistakes, we do the best we can. Do things happen? Absolutely, but we're normally very prepared, and we hold a lot of people accountable as well from our construction side. It was great to see that we completed Lakeside two months early, which allowed our students to get in there early. That's holding a high standard, maybe working in the evening when we're not supposed to, but we get things done, which also rewarded us to remove our eighteen modular units six months early. And the amount of revenue that just in rentals that we saved on Lakeside to remove those is huge. Also, getting our kids in a building and not a modular unit, so.
What does a modular cost?
A a lot.
Yeah, or how much?
Lakeside, Lakeside alone, the eighteen modular units in just rental alone, I would say was close to twenty thousand dollars a month, just in rentals. But then you have to understand, we pay all the electrical bills, heating and air, maintenance and operations. So they vary in in cost based on their sizes. But I mean, think about over twenty thousand dollars plus maintenance, you're thinking thirty thousand dollars a month for six months, that that goes back to us. As well as, like I said, go to the safety. Todd Shirley and Steve Hahn love the fact of getting our kids back inside of a building. You know, we do our best to keep everything tight and secure, but that's a huge savings and a great safety.
And then the modular units come out of our M and O budget.
Correct, the maintenance and operations.
Or anything like that, so.
We do not pay for mods out of SPOST, so that is my general fund budget that we have to try to, hey, if we can save that. So six months early is amazing. And then a lot of people also, uh, forget that we didn't just build an addition at Lakeside. We did, uh, about five to seven million dollars of renovations there, upgrades while we were there to get cost savings. While you have a contractor there, do all of it. As you saw some of those slides, we replaced over a hundred HVAC units, we replaced water heaters, we did everything that was cycled through their life cycle, and we also earned money back from our state capital outlay with that. So again, I'm excited to celebrate Lakeside. I'm looking forward to bringing next month, I believe we may bring Midway to you. But it's great to celebrate these projects and what we're doing and prepping for the next SPOST.
It's important to note, too, this isn't just Lakeside, for folks who may not be familiar with all of our SPOST projects. Certainly, the building replacement at Midway will be the next celebration that we get to bring to you, but these are things that are ongoing, right, Matt?
Yes, and I will tell you, too, that I'm excited about, one of our presentations will be the infrastructure that we're updating. It's not just always nice, fancy, new buildings. We're really doing a great job district-wide upgrading our HVAC units, our fresh air units. That that's what they do, is they bring fresh air into our space to keep our kids healthy and our teachers healthy in there.
And what's been great is our our families through LSE, PTO, and even our advisory and engagement councils have expressed how much this means to them. They've talked a lot about being able to remain within their home districts, their school districts, where they know their older brothers and sisters went to school, and they want to wear those Lakeside Lion shirts with an addition. It just gave that opportunity to kind of expand and and have those children be a part of the same community they had hoped to remain in.
Are we going to say the same thing?
Go ahead, you go.
So the most.
So the most important part of all this is that we did it debt-free.
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 Debt-free. That's what we need to make sure everybody knows. There were no bonds.
It's not a big ending, but yes.
Oh, did I?
That was on my sheet last night.
I want to see this. All right, back up, back up.
So that's not where I was going to go, but yes, that's number one important. But number two, particularly for our three new board members, as they'll learn, hopefully never, but maybe somewhere down the line, that's also, when you do an addition, that is redistricting prevention. And that is, that's wonderful also.
Yes, it's something, and like I said, it's hard to deal with an active school site. That's always not pleasant. But, is she a doctor? Dr. Thompson at Lakeside was phenomenal to work with. Honestly, Tom Wenning, it was his project. And he said she was one of the best principals we ever worked with. So we're very excited to work with the principals and they get to see it grow with them. And we're doing the same thing at Mashburn, which we're very excited about as well.
Any questions?
Questions? Questions. Be back next month.
Well, I'll say thank you. I've been to this addition twice and it, you can't even tell it's an addition. I mean, it's just so seamless when you go from the, you know, the original building into the, into the addition. We've asked staff, and this is more for the benefit of the public, we've asked staff to come in pretty much on a monthly basis and kind of give us some updates because we've taken it upon ourselves as a system to tell our own story, right? So this is part of telling the story and where your tax dollars are going. SPOST is a super important part of our overall financial health. First, it's a consumption tax, which means roughly 40% of that tax is paid by people who don't live here. So that's a lot of money that the residential taxpayer is not paying. Just about all of our buildings, additions, maintenance, capital outlays gets paid through SPOST. And again, as Mr. McCall mentioned, debt-free, we're not taking on any new debt. And in fact, SPOST has gone to pay down debt as well. So overall, it's, I think, a fantastic solution for the taxpayer. And I think additions to our buildings are going to be a fantastic solution for Forsyth County Schools. Like you guys said, we don't have to redistrict. If I have to redistrict Lambert, I'm going to have to move back to Florida. So additions, I think, are the way to go. And I really appreciate all the hard work and also not lost upon me how hard it is to build something within something that's active. So thank you for the fine work you guys do.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you next month.
Great job. Thank you.
All right. Next up, an update from our CFO, Mr. Larry Hamel, banking update. Hopefully, you have more money than last time.
The banking update basically is, is we started a process last year about spring last year to switch over banking services. We did RFP process. We had five banks show up. We went with three of them for the RFP process and JP Morgan won that process. And I wanted to tell you that we are the second week into the switchover and we should be completely switched over by the end of this month, beginning of next month. And that process taken us nine months to accomplish, but right now it looks like everything's on schedule for everything going. So if you see anything changes at the school level or anything like that, it's because we're switching over to JP Morgan.
Larry, it's part of that. And this may not seem like a huge deal, but for years and years, our bookkeepers would have to cart money to and from the bank. Can you talk just a little bit about that change? That's a small thing, but important.
As part of the process, JP Morgan offered to provide car pickup services as part of their cost to them, not us. So we have Brink's on a state schedule, our scholarship, scholarship contract to the state of Georgia, that's going to go to every school and start picking up all the deposits for school nutrition front offices from now on. So no people from our schools will have to go to any branches or anything like that.
I'd just say that as, and all the former principals that are sitting out there and former sister principals out there, it was always just, like, it bothered me every week that we would have one of our bookkeepers or one of our admin have to load up, you know, a bucket of money, you know, and take it, take it to the bank. And I don't know, just a, just a very important safety feature. So love that.
Questions? Thank you, Larry. All right. Next on the agenda for F is future agenda items. And for the benefit of the new members, it's self-explanatory. It's an opportunity where if any member would like to add something for a future meeting, we do so here. Of course, there's always opportunities to add things to the agenda, but this is just something we tend to do at our work sessions. So with that, anybody have any future agenda items? No? No? All right, that was easy. All right. Next up is action items. Mr. Derek Hershey with the employee work calendars for '25 and '26.
Good evening. This is very important for our staff for the next school year. They like to begin to schedule their vacations and all the good stuff that comes with it. So I am proposing the employee calendar for the FY '26 school year and requesting that Mr. Young recommend the calendar to the Board of Education for approval. Yeah.
Mr. Hershey?
There's a, it's the summary that's up here. The other was sent to you guys. This is the employee summary. And this includes all of your arranged employees from 180 days, which are bus drivers, to 182 for food service assistants and so forth. But we range from 180 to 240-day calendars for different groups of employees. And it all stems from the start of the student calendar and then we build them from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. I recommend the '25, '26 employee summary calendar for approval.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the employee work calendar for '25 and '26? A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion, questions?
Mr. Hershey, I just want to make, most teachers are 180, correct?
They're 190.
190, okay.
Teachers, parents, food service managers and councilors.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hershey. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel? A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? All right, we'll be back.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Safe travels out there.